Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. We are going to start off tonight with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Do we have the video?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, video. We haven't had one in a while.
Today, 1,093 students have earned and will receive their high school diplomas from the North Penn School District.
No matter where in the world this life might take you, always, always, always remember that North Penn is your home. Because as the saying goes, "Once a night, always a night." And we love her.
We can't wait for others to transfer their spark. Rather, we must initiate and ignite our own flame.
We can remember that small actions and little goals, coupled with compassion, perseverance, and a bit of luck, may be enough to send us well on our way.
So whatever big task it is that you might have coming, whether you fail at that task once, twice, or 5,126 times, just remember that if you give your very best effort, no matter what, you will one day achieve greatness.
I learned that this time wasn't wasted at all. In fact, it was exactly what I needed, to just take a breath and live in the moment. To not think about what is to come or what has already happened, but to just be present and enjoy it.
Now by the powers vested in me by Pennsylvania Department of Education, I hereby declare that all members of the class of 2019 from this point forth shall be known as graduates of North Penn High School. Congratulations.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So that was a really nice video. It was a great night, graduation night. Okay, so we are going to move on then to another fun thing, and that is recognitions and proclamations. Tonight, we will be recognizing the North Penn School District Odyssey of the Mind programs and NPTV. So I think first up is North Penn Odyssey of the Mind, with Joanne Wirnus as the program director.
Good evening, members of the school board, cabinet members, and Dr. Dietrich. I am proud to be here tonight as district coordinator of North Penn's Odyssey of the Mind program to acknowledge our students' achievements in Odyssey of the Mind competitions. To prepare for competitions, students work together in teams of five to seven to solve a detailed problem. Odyssey of the Mind problem solutions are presented in an eight-minute skit, which is performance-based and might include technical elements, balsa wood structures, team creative vehicles, and dramatic flair. Creativity of costuming and props is encouraged. Humor is essential. Each team performs their skit at a regional tournament, and based upon scores can advance to state and world finals. This season, 137 students from 10 North Penn elementary schools, two middle schools, and North Penn High School participated in an Odyssey of the Mind. These teams formed 21 teams. These students formed 21 teams. Each of our OM teams was coached by one or two adults and supported by a couple hundred parent supporters that went above and beyond to contribute to the team's success. Tonight, you will meet students from 10 teams that placed at the OM regional competition and competed at the state tournament. Yes, 10 of our 22 teams advanced to states. This is no small feat, given that the southeast PA region is one of the most competitive in the state. Over the years, North Penn has enjoyed increasing success, earning a number of medals and distinguished honors. A team from the North Penn program has advanced to world finals every year since 2010. This year, for the first time in North Penn Odyssey of the Mind history, three teams earned the privilege to compete at world finals, which was held at Michigan State University in May. These three teams, whose students attend Pennbrook, Pendale, and North Penn High School, advanced to world finals and competed against teams from the United States and other countries around the world, including Poland, Mexico, Singapore, Japan, China, South Korea, Qatar, India, Russia, Germany, and Switzerland. I will close my remarks with a quote from the founder of Odyssey of the Mind. According to Dr. Sam Miklis, Odyssey of the Mind teaches young people to embrace changes. It instills in youngsters an excitement about learning and an excitement about themselves and their ability to achieve what others might say is impossible. His belief is that for education to be most effective, it must be challenging, and that it is important for students to have fun in the process of meeting those challenges. I believe our students would attest to the fact that OM is fun. I know our teachers and parents note the educational benefits. But the most reliable measure of our program's success is its growth over the years. Every year, more and more families seek out the program, knowing participation requires a tremendous commitment of dedication and time. Many of our students begin the program in elementary school and remain on a team through middle and high school. Dedication like this is an education in itself. On behalf of the students and their families, I thank you for your continued support of North Penn Odyssey of the Mind, a program that offers a challenging, fun, learning opportunity to the students of our school district. Thank you. Ready? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and introduce you to the students. The first group of students is from the Pendale Structure Team. The team is coached by Kathy Heath and Dan Boyce. The first student is Sarah Heath.
Sarah, you can come on through, Sarah.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Robert Heath. Mark Heath. Daniella Boyce is on the team, but she's not here tonight. Dreya Nicholson. The next team is the Pennbrook Performance Team, coached by Lisa Upright. The first student is Jillian Upright. Jake Bradley. Swarup Joglakhar. Maddie Hanrahan. Gemma Shavor. Tarun Ingar. The next team is the North Wales Performance Team, coached by Tracy Clark and Juan Whalen. Millie Clark. Ani Whalen. Ela Hinky. Michelle Fazio. Ash Rush. Olivia Castle. And Emma Cantonese. The next team is the North Wales Technical Team, coached by Christine and Simon Hinky. Orley Hinky. Sloane Peasley. Ava Lara-Viar. Silas Jisabelle. Declan Lawrence. Daphne McCauly. The next team is the Gwinnett Square Classics Team, coached by Prashant Jaswal and Antoinette Macari-Klingenberg. The first team member is Jaya Jaswal. Gia Jaswal. June Biswas. Aaron Blure, who is not here tonight. Yashvi Patel. Nawal Klingenberg. Natalie Hamel. The next team is the Inglewood Structure Team, coached by Karen Navard. Ryan Navard could not attend tonight. We have Evie Dalton. Eric Voss. The next team is the North Penn High School Performance Team, coached by myself and Lisa Upright. The first student is Lisa, or Lise Upright. Natalie Upright is not here tonight, nor is Viann Chang, but they're on the team. Sally Myers. Aaron Zhu could not attend tonight. Sammy Riley. The next team is the Pennbrook Vehicle Team. This is one of our three teams that went to world finals. The first student is Sawyer Steinbauer. He's unable to be here tonight. Danielle Schmitt Lang, Daniel Schmidt Lang. I'm brutal. Sashi Sinoff. Alex Gopel. Om Patel. Sanvi Patel. And Ana DeSantis, who couldn't be here tonight. The next team is the North Penn High School Technical Team, coached by Mike Lockery and Laura Boquist. This team also participated in world finals. The first team member is Abby Boquist. Lorna Lockery. Megan Lockery. Kyle Shaftstaller could not attend tonight. Leah Whalen. Briann Scott was unable to attend tonight. Ready? Sachrida Hari Bria. Yes! The last team is the North Penn High School Classics Team, another world finalist, coached by Patty Eglin and Patty Har. First member is Kyle Har. Laura Eglin. Greg Sanborn is on the team, but could not attend tonight. Jayden Ween. And Jane Peters. And thank you once again.
Mrs. Wirnus.
I'd just like to make an announcement that if you are interested in watching this again on TV, it will be rebroadcast on Comcast Channel 28 and Verizon FiOS Channel 29 on the following dates. Friday, June 21st at 7:30 PM. Monday, June 24th at 12:30 and 7:30 PM. Tuesday, June 25th at 12:30 and 7:30 PM. And Wednesday, June 26th at 12:30 PM. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Was it something I said?
Not you, Mr. Gilmer.
That wasn't me.
So our second round of proclamations tonight are for the NPTV with Mr. Rob Gilmer, Bob Gilmer.
And Mary Fagish.
And Mary Fagish.
We're both here tonight to talk about the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Mid-Atlantic Chapter's National Student Television Awards, as Melina is holding and showcasing right now. This year, we had six nominations for this competition. It's very competitive. It's Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware. I think it's a slice of West Virginia now. There's part of that market that's in there now that all the high schools across those areas submit for awards. We had six nominations total, and we came home with four awards. One was for Best Package in Sports by Paul Calendar. The next was for Best Sports Program, which was made possible by Eric Justburger and Prasham Jovanputra. The third was Best Talent for Melina Clarko and Eric Justburger, you may have recognized from North Penn Right Now. And that's what they, I think that's what we had you in for. That's what we entered, was North Penn Right Now Show. And then finally, the one we're always, well, one I should say, I'm always eager to see if we get is Best Newscast. It is the top award for the Emmy Award Ceremony for high schools. And this year, we captured Best Newscast for our Mornings program, which they name after one of their own. And it's very honored for the organization that gives it, gives out the award, and it also comes with a $1,000 prize. So we're very excited to capture that. We don't always capture that every year. It's very, very competitive, and we were very happy to see that happen this year. Couple quick stats, I like to do my stats. So our number one show this year was Coatsville when we were at Pen Ridge. We just checked it before we got started tonight, and Dom was surprised that we were up that high. It was up to 300,000 views. Yes, I don't know if we're getting taped for next year or what, or what's going on with that game. But overall, this year, we had 1.5 million minutes watched of the programming. This year, over 400,000 views on our YouTube channel. And we had 100, I'm sorry, 200, over 200 long-form events. So school board meetings, concerts, our sporting events, all of those types of things. So over 200 of those events, which is night times and weekends. And keep in mind, we have 180 days of school. So these guys are working multiple times a day with different events as we go through it. So we've had a lot of programming this school year. So I think that's all my stats for this year. What I'd like to do is introduce the seniors that are here. This is not the whole North Penn Television crew. We don't do it with the three of us and Mrs. Fagish and myself. So we only bring our seniors here, and we are missing a few seniors tonight. But we are going to introduce, I'm going to read the names of everyone, but we'll start with Melina Clarko. Do you want to carry that around? You want to hand that off? Here you go. Melina, as you know, is the anchor of North Penn Right Now. She's also on Mornings. You're going to wrap around. And she's going to American University next year. Paul Calendar is not with us tonight. He's one of our career study students. He is the one that won for Best Sports Package. He's also obviously very integral in our Mornings and North Penn Right Now programs and everything else. He's going to Messiah College next year. Shirin Chong is going to Drexel next year. She's also a senior with us, very integral in all of our Mornings program and newscast. Next is Pranjazi Das. She is going to Penn State next year. Now, Pranjazi is also on the Emmy Award-winning Mornings program. She's an anchor. She's seen her here. She's been with us since sophomore years. So we're going to be sorry to see Pranjazi go. Next on our senior crew is Allison Lasianka. She's not able to be here tonight. She's also one of our anchors for our Mornings program. She'll be attending Penn State next year. Patrick O'Neill was doing a work-study with us this year. He also could not be here tonight. He is working tonight, and he'll be attending Bloomsburg University. Next up is a person you've seen a lot over the last couple of years here, is Dominic Rodriguez. Dom, come around. Dom was a career study student this year as well. And as you, anybody that's at a meeting here knows how much he knows about technology, video, computers. I am personally going to miss Dom tremendously next year. So next meeting, we'll see if all this stuff works properly. If not, I'll have Dom on speed dial. Dom's going to George Mason next year. And the last two names, Rachel Rosenblatt. She has been with us the last couple of years. She's going to Temple University. And Sam Santangelo, who is also another one of our career study students you'd see here a lot. He's actually at the high school tonight because they're doing their preview of Midsummer's Night's Dream because they're headed to Nationals on Saturday. So he's running audio tonight, and he is headed to Clarion next year. And that's our North Penn Television seniors.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you very much. You guys do a great job, and we really will miss Dom. I saw you in the graduation line. I'm like, oh, no, who's going to be behind the camera at our board meeting? So. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have to, did we text Julian? All right. We have a school board member who will be participating remotely. Julian Romich is calling in right now. So as soon as she calls in, we will proceed with the agenda. Is she on? Can you talk? Julian, are you there? We need who? Yes, yes, yes. Where is Dom? Did he leave already?
Somebody grab him at the parking lot.
We'll just, we'll move on for now. Okay. So the next up would be the Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone that would care to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move on then to approval of the minutes from the May 16th, 2019 action meeting and from the June 10th, 2019 work session. Do you want to have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. J. Any comments or questions?
Madam President, just to let you know that I just received notice that Mrs. Romich is on the line.
Thank you. All right, so are there any comments or questions about the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on then to committee reports. The first one is personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board met in executive session on June 10th, 2019, from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM to discuss prospective employees, salary rates for summer workers, and support staff substitutes, and the filling of administrative vacancies. End of report. Finance, Mr. Diazio.
Thank you. This is an update from the June 10th meeting of the Finance Committee. The monthly financial reports were reviewed. An additional discussion was held regarding the following items. The 2019-2020 Community Education Enterprise Fund budget. The objective for this program is to cover all costs and provide a service to the community. A $50,000 transfer to the general fund is included in this budget. 2019 real estate tax assessment appeals. The list of potential tax assessment appeals was reviewed. There's an August 1st deadline in order for the district to file those appeals. Forty-two parcels were identified as potentially being under-assessed by $600,000 or more and will be further examined. Per board policy, the potential list must be approved at the June action meeting. The committee also discussed the 2019 homestead exemption, which is $212.22 for each eligible property. The 2019 real estate tax installment plan was discussed. Mr. Skraki reviewed the parameters of the plan. One-third of the tax that's due is due by August 1st, one-third by September 6th, and one-third due by October 31st. All properties in the school district are eligible for this installment plan. The new student was, new student representative to the committee was introduced, and the Finance Committee will welcome Jojo Dewadi to the team at the next meeting. Mr. Skraki reviewed the PASBO PASA budget survey results that were recently released. The three main stressors on school district budgets continue to be charter school tuition, pension obligations, special education expenses. And finally, Mr. Skraki reviewed Senate Bill 700 dealing with proposed Plan Con legislation. The items that are on tonight's agenda for approval are the 2019-2020 Extended Care Program Enterprise Fund budget, the 2019 district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeal list, the 2019 homestead exemption, the 2019 real estate tax installment plan, the 2019 business office operational items, and finally, the May budget transfers. The next Finance Committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, July 9th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. We may likely cancel that meeting, and then we'll be scheduling a meeting for August. So stay tuned on the next meeting date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diazio. Moving on to Safe Schools. Terry, would you like to read that? Thanks.
The Safe Schools Committee met on May 28th. Mr. Dur shared that the evening Safe Schools collaborative sessions held in April were a success. Parent attendance was light, however, those that came were appreciative of the opportunity to engage in a dialogue about school safety. Mr. Dur also shared a public version of his annual report, which was delivered to the board in May. The report included a summary of work completed during the prior 11 months, as well as school safety statistics. Mr. Dean Miller, Montgomery County School Safety Specialist, shared information with the committee and fielded questions about the use of metal detectors and armed personnel in schools. Mr. Miller also discussed safety items to be considered for Crawford Stadium. Finally, Mr. Dur spoke about safety and security planning for the North Penn High School graduation ceremony. This is the district's most high-profile event and involves a detailed planning process with the assistance from local law enforcement. And as you can see on the video, it really went nice. Very organized. I was impressed. I've been to a few. The Safe Schools Committee meeting scheduled for June 25th has been canceled. The next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, July 23rd, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prokowsky. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Prokowsky? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to education, community, and policy.
So the ECP has two meetings to update. The first was the May 28th, 2019 meeting. Among the informational items discussed, there was the online assessment feedback. Dr. Todd Bauer and Mr. Mike Body presented comparative feedback from students and teachers regarding their test-taking experiences with Linkit this year. Test results show no significant statistical difference in all subject areas and performance. In fact, most students performed better. Night School, a new online component of professional learning, will be introduced in 2019-2020. And then, Special Education Services at North Penn High School was also discussed. Ms. Ruth Disidario, interim director of Special Education, and Ms. Megan Schop, special education teacher and department chair at the high school, reviewed the special education program at the high school. Each IEP student's program is determined by their post-secondary anticipated plans, which include attendance at two- or four-year colleges, trade schools, competitive or supported employment, military service, and community-based day programming. The program has continued to evolve and incorporates co-taught classes with special education teachers who are also certified in specific content area, a supportive environment, and academic opportunities for students. The diversity of this program to address the needs and abilities of students with IEPs is ahead of the curve. The next meeting, actually, we'll do the update from the June 17. The next meeting was the June 17 meeting, and that meeting was moved up in order to address policies specifically that are on the agenda tonight. So, there's an adoption of policies. Dr. Todd Bauer presented four policies to the committee. 301, creating a position. 304, employment of district staff. 304.1, nepotism. And 309, assignment and transfer. These policies were developed based on recommendations from PSBA and the solicitor for the district as well as input from district administrators. The committee moved these to a first reading and adoption by the school board. We also discussed the repeal of policies. The following policies will need to be repealed subsequent to the adoption of Policies 301, Creating a Position, 304, Employment of District Staff, 304.1, Nepotism, and 309, Assignment and Transfer. These policies were developed based on recommendations from PSBA and the solicitor for the district as well as input from district administrators. The committee moved these to a first reading and adoption by the school board. We also discussed the repeal of policies. The following policies will need to be repealed subsequent to the adoption of Policies 301, Creating a Position, 304, Employment of District Staff, 304.1, Nepotism, and 309, Assignment and Transfer. So, those policies that will need to be repealed are Policy 4111, Selection of Appointment of Staff, Policy 4111.1, Recruitment and Selection, Nepotism, Policy 4111.2, and Posting of Open Positions and Transfers. So, we're glad there will be less numbers involved in reading of policies moving forward. There's also student travel item that was discussed. One student travel item was reviewed by the committee and recommended for action by the Board. The next meeting is scheduled for July 23, 2019 at 6:30 at the ESC. Now, is that right? We're doing that because we were some confusion about that at our last meeting. We're scheduled for 6:30. And Ms. Prokowsky, Ms. G., and Mr. McBane, we do intend to have that meeting unlike many of the other summer ones, so if you can make yourself available, please.
I won't be available.
You won't? Okay. Good to know. Thanks in advance. End of report. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Moving on then to facilities and operations. The Facilities and Operations Committee met on May 29, 2019. Mr. Kennedy presented a proposal for geotechnical services for the NAP Elementary School project. This item is on tonight's agenda. Mr. Kennedy and Dr. Bauer reviewed a rental fee waiver request from Del Valle University. Del Valle University is developing a program to offer graduate-level courses for North Penn staff in our schools. This item is on tonight's agenda as well. Mr. Kennedy gave an update on the Crawford Stadium project, which included design development meetings, town enz and zoning hearing board meetings, and continued progress on the project documents. Mr. Kennedy gave an update on the NAP project, which included design development meetings, planning commission meetings, food service meetings, and the application to the Lansdale Zoning Hearing Board. The committee reviewed the status of the construction management services. This request for proposals has been issued with responses due on June 20, which is today. So, Mr. Kennedy shared the facility study, which was prepared by the Schrader Group. He also gave an update on upcoming service contract bids. The next Facility and Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 24 at 6:00 PM at the ESC. Oh, no, actually, it's been canceled, so didn't read that far ahead, so it's been canceled. All right. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move then on to the North Montco Technical Career Center.
I have two reports to give tonight. The first one will be from the JOC meeting on May 20, 2019, starting out with the announcement that Mr. Ken Keith of Salderton was unanimously appointed to continue his tenure as treasurer until May 2020. Then, we followed that up with a ratification of the treasurer's report from April 2019. We covered quite a few personnel motions, including one which announced that Dr. Kurt Dietrich of North Penn will be serving as the superintendent of record for the 2019-2020 school year, so we're very much looking forward to that. We also approved student travel, so textbook purchases. We ratified the MCIU contract for tech support services. We approved the agenda, or the agreement for nursing services with personal health care. We approved the sublease agreement with Lansdale Warehouse Company. Student lunch prices are increasing from $3.15 to $3.25 with the start of the 2019-2020 school year. Authorized depositories were made as presented. Budget transfers were approved as presented. The following, a group of student traffic, or staff travel requests were approved, and donations were accepted and will be acknowledged. More detail about all of this can be found on Board Docs. The next meeting to talk about was the meeting from this past Monday. That meeting, there were quite a few travel requests and personnel items to discuss, but I think some of the big ones that I want to make sure that the Board and the public are aware of tonight have to do with the acceptance of the resignation of Justin Turner in the IT Department, the approval of employment of Steven Monastra, who will be serving as supervisor of instruction and principal at North Montco. And the, we approved some student handbook revisions, some textbook purchases. We approved a resolution related to the school police officer. This resolution can be found in Board Docs, but just to give everyone an overview, it did allow for the resource officer, at least, school police officer at North Montco to carry a concealed, or firearm. I will say that all three members of the North Penn School Board that represents over there did vote against this resolution. It did, however, pass. And the next JOC meeting will be Monday, August 19 at 7:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Ms. Ott? Seeing none, we will go on to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, and Mr. Fusco.
Yes. Ms. Romich asked me to read. Okay. The Board of the MCIU met on May 22 to honor MCIU retirees, review initial program budgets, and receive legislative staffing and program updates from members of the MCIU leadership team. The MCIU Board also received an update on the status of contract bids for the renovation of the building on Main Street and approved a resolution to award construction contracts so that work can begin this summer. End of report.
Thank you. The next report is the North Penn Educational Foundation, Ms. Ott.
The Foundation's June meeting was moved from earlier in the month to June 24. At this time, we will be discussing an internal survey of the Board of Trustees that was administered by Match Nonprofit Consulting. We're working with the, with Match to develop a roadmap for the future of the Foundation. End of report.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. All right. Moving then on to the Solicitor's Report. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of executive session announcements and then just an item or two. So, in addition to the Personnel Committee report, which mentioned an executive session, the Personnel Committee of the Board also met in an additional executive session prior to this board meeting tonight for the purpose of discussing matters involving administrative vacancies. The full Board also met in an executive session prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing matters involving administrative vacancies and the evaluation of performance of administrative employees. During that time, the Board also received information on, but did not deliberate, two additional confidential matters. One follow-up to the ECP report that Mr. Fusco provided, I just want to emphasize that on the agenda tonight for the first read of policies as well as the notice of intent to repeal policies is really something you're going to see pretty much every meeting from now for the next six to 12 months as the district goes through the process of reviewing every single policy that is currently in effect, reviewing those policies, updating them, and revising the numbering system to be consistent with recommendations from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. So, this is really the start of what will be a long process. So, if there are any questions about that, certainly, I and other, you know, everyone on ECP is happy to answer them. And then, the last item I'll note is part of the report is to provide updates on recent laws that have been enacted. I don't have anything on that front to report, but as hopefully the state budget passes, around the same time, we often see a number of changes to the public school code, new laws go into effect that apply to school districts. So, at the next meeting, I may have a number of those to share with everyone. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Does anyone have any questions?
Just want to thank Mr. Summers for his work, and some of those policies have been looked at for well over a decade, especially some of the ones tonight, so well overdue, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, then, moving on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you. I recommend approval of alternative placements as per those listed, and copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of settlement agreements as per those listed, and copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of expulsion for the students numbered as listed. Names are on file in the Office of Superintendent. The students' parents, guardians have waived their rights to the expulsion period.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend first reading of Board Policies 301, 304, 304.1, and 309.
So moved.
I'm sorry, do I have a second? Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the intent to repeal the policies as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions?
Recommend approval of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. G., seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. G., seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Ott. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to advertise for bid for the 2019-20 purchase of musical instruments, transportation GPS tracking system, and bus tracking mobile app.
Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think there's a delay. All, okay, so all in favor, right? Any disapproved or, the motion carries? Okay.
Recommend approval of the final budget resolution in the amount of $273,977,289 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, per the attached resolution and the PDE 2028 form budget document.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Scrackey, would you like to do a roll call?
Yes, please. Roll call vote. Mr. McBane?
Aye.
Mrs. Romich?
Aye.
Mrs. Prokowsky?
Nay.
Ms. Ott?
Nay.
Mrs. G?
Aye.
Mr. Fusco?
Aye.
Mr. D'Azio?
No.
And Mrs. Stoll?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-3.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of the contracts as listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the filing of district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeals by August 1, 2019, the deadline as attached in the list of parcels.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McBane and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the.
Can I just, can I ask that the Board Secretary just mark an abstention for me for that vote? Thank you.
Sorry.
Recommend approval of the LERT agreement and the resolution as per the attached.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Education and Technology Pool Council Legal Services consultation agreement with Sweet Steens Katz Williams, LLC, in the amount of $25,000 for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, as per the attached.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky and seconded by Mr. McBane. We had this last year, correct?
Or Mr. D'Azio.
Are there any comments or questions? I'm sorry, was it?
Or Mr. D'Azio.
Mr. D'Azio, I'm sorry.
It's the glasses, I think.
I can't see.
Would you call my name?
No. All right. So, are there any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the award of a contract to De Palantino Contractors of Huffman &amp; Sons Concrete for concrete repairs based on unit prices. Recommend the award of a contract to Orkin for IPM services in the amount of $9,450. Recommend the award of a contract to Hollister Electric for electronic technician services at $78 per hour.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions?
Question. Scott, I guess it's yours. The Orkin, are they using all-natural, or are we?
It's mostly traps, glue boards, things like that, not chemicals. That's what the Integrated Pest Management stands for. Not, no use of chemicals, only as a last, last resort.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this, is it scattered all throughout the district? These are projects all over the place? Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any more comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the awarding of bids for the 2019-20 purchase of Chromebooks, laptops, and desktops as per the attached bid tabulations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions?
Just a question regarding the Chromebooks. Are they, are they replacing old ones? Are they, was it about a million dollars worth of Chromebooks? Just wondering, are they?
These are not replacements. These are new. So, it's a grand total of 3,000. This will be our third straight year of purchase of 3,000. So, our price this year is actually lower than what it was two years ago. But I don't have the specifics in terms of what grades these are going to, but I know these are new units, not really replacing anything, per se.
Okay. So we can get, just if we have any other questions, Krista can answer them for us later.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Mrs. G. and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
I just want to comment, as we come to another end of the year here, I just want to thank Dr. McHugh and her team. It's been, in the four years that I've been up here, I think this has probably been the busiest year through HR. So I just really want to thank you and the team for all you do. I know you say all the time it's a team effort, but as the leader of that department, thank you for everything you do.
Yes, thank you.
I second that.
Yeah, I'll second that, knowing that we didn't make your job any easier this year. So thank you.
And I'll second that.
All righty. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we'll note, with that approval, we did approve the North Penn High School Assistant Principal Nicholas Taylor. Mr. Taylor is president of the audience. If you could just give a little acknowledgement there. And Nick will be available after the meeting for some more personalized introductions. So please welcome Nick right after the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Item P, we do have geotechnical services for NAP Elementary. The recommendation is to award a contract to GTA associates for geotechnical study at NAP Elementary School in the amount of $12,300 as per the attached.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio, right, seconded by Mr. McBain and Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
It's not fair she's on a delay.
Right. Yeah, tangle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the award of a contract to Criterion for environmental consulting for the NAP Elementary School project in the amount of $6,525 as per the attached proposal tabulation.
So moved.
Motioned by Ms. Ott and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel as listed.
So moved.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the administration to work with Special Olympics International with regard to the potential filming of a documentary featuring North Penn High School's role in unified sports and Special Olympics.
So moved.
Second. Motioned by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. I would just like to make a comment that I have a really special place in my heart for the Special Olympics. I have an aunt who's five years older than me that I grew up with, and when I was president of 12 Night Booster Club, the football coach and I, we started a program with the Variety Club in Morchester, which I think I've told you about, Jenna, where the football players would go out and play flag football on Sunday mornings with the kids from the Variety Club. And it's really, you know, sports has a way of helping kids relate to one another, and I'm just so proud that North Penn has had this program now with the unified team, and I'm thrilled that Netflix is going to come in and make this program and this film, and I'm really looking forward to seeing it when it's completed. So congratulations on it, and I wholeheartedly support this, so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you. So are there any other comments or questions? No? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the waiver of building rental fees for the Del Valle University as part of the graduate programs being offered to North Penn staff.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just a quick question. So in exchange for this, our staff will get reduced rates. Is that, okay.
Yes. And in addition to the reduced rates for the graduate students, they're also offering Act 45 credit for Level 2 administrators so that they don't need to miss work on those days. So they're going to offer those to us for free as well.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2019 homestead and farmstead exclusion as per the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2019 real estate tax installment payment plan as per the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Mrs. Burkowski and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of an increase of 2.3% to the salary and hourly rate schedule of non-union and confidential support staff for the 2019-20 fiscal year effective July 1st, 2019.
Second.
Motioned by Ms. Ott and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
Does this impact nutrition staff, food services, or just? All right, then, I need to do some.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2019-20 Extended Care Program Enterprise Fund budget in the amount of $2,389,672 as per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco. Do I have a second?
For Mr. Fusco.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions?
Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
We might be done with her.
Yeah.
We got the voting.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval authorizing the chief financial officer to make investments, purchases, expenditures, and other fixed school district obligations such as bids and bid awards of amounts owed under any contracts previously approved by the Board of Directors and/or approved in the 2019-20 district budget, and further recommend approval to authorize the business office to make required budget transfers should they be needed as directed by its legal auditors upon completing the audit of the 2018-19 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. I don't know what that noise is, but, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Moving on then to the finance reports. Mr. Skrocky.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick updates. First off, on the state budget. Mr. Summers alluded to that earlier, but the state budget bill right now is in the House Appropriations Committee. It's expected to move sometime next week, probably Wednesday through Friday, somewhere in that time period. June 30th is the deadline for the state budget to be adopted, but as we know, that doesn't always happen each year. The hope is that actually will happen this year, so next week is going to be a very busy week in Harrisburg. Just a quick update on our tax rebate program for the 18-19 year. We're up to 421 applicants for the year. The average rebate is $81, and we've granted rebates totaling nearly $33,000 for the fiscal year. Our new program starts July 1st. That includes a 30% rebate for eligible property owners and renters. So we've been advertising that, and we've been promoting the program with our local legislators as well.
And what was our total participation? Do you know again?
421.
I meant percentage-wise, like, is it?
In terms of percent, we're about up to 30% of what we budgeted.
30% of what we budgeted?
Of what we budgeted, yeah.
All right.
In terms of the North Penn budget, we're basically left now with a half a month left in this fiscal year, and things look pretty positive. We still anticipate we'll be able to recommend about a $1 million transfer to the Board, to the Capper Reserve Fund. That recommendation will become, as we proceed with our audit, of more finite numbers at that point. And in terms of revenues this year, we're bringing in about $2.5 million more than what was budgeted. So just a reminder, we did have a deficit budget this year, so any kind of shortfall in expenditures and excess of revenues is certainly welcome news. In terms of the treasurer's report, this report is for the month of May, and for the month of May, we collected $11.6 million in receipts. Our disbursements totaled $18 million, which left us with available funds at the end of May of $92.3 million, and that's roughly an $8 million increase over the same position last year. So we would need approval for the treasurer's report, please.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, on to the sanction and approval of invoices. I recommend the ratification of disbursements for the month of May 2019 totaling $21,997.88 and 88 cents.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mrs. Burkowski. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, finally, we have the approval of budget transfers. I recommend approval of the budget transfers for May 1, 2019 through May 31, 2019 in the amount of $4,038,285.61.
So moved.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, just for information, we have the financial reports for the month of May, many of which we reviewed at last month's Finance Committee meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Skrocky, and thank you to you and your staff also for all the work that you've done during this budget season.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Okay. Moving on then to the PSBA voting delegates. Mr. Skrocky?
This is for, North Penn is able to elect three voting delegates for the PSBA Delegate Assembly, which is to be held on October 18th, 2019, and we have three board members that expressed interest in that, Mrs. Stoll, Mr. Casa, and Mr. McBain. So the recommendation is for those three board members to serve and represent North Penn School District as voting delegates at that delegate assembly.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Do Tim and I have to abstain? No? Okay. All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you, Mr. Skrocky, again. All right, moving then on to our second audience of citizens. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out this evening.